...someone or something special about our community and this year I wanted to recognize Abby Bennett. Come on Abby. Abby is, Abby is a Gold Girl Scout this year, which is the highest rank that a Girl Scout can attain. It's the equivalent of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts. So, and I'm getting some voices here.
Gold Star.
Gold Star, correct? Gold Star? Gold Star, excuse me, Gold Star Scout. Abby, why don't you tell us a little bit about your project?
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. So for my project, I am very involved with the church, so I decided to enhance our media capability. We have a lot of meetings and presentations there, especially for the Historical Society. So I decided that we should make it more accessible to youth. So with the help of Mr. Nation, Mr. Haley, and Mr. Hamel, I was able to install a projector screen and then I collected donations from the community in town to buy a projector and a DVD player. So now with our new form, new form group, we can have more movie night and make having presentations and different meetings and everything at the church a lot easier.
I understand from Abby's mother that she's participating, the Boy Scouts now have a program where girls can also participate and get an Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts as well. Now Abby's older brother Sam, who's in the Navy, is an Eagle Scout and her older sister is a Gold Star Scout. She's going to be the first one to be an Eagle Scout and a Gold Star Scout too. They're not competitive in that family at all. Abby, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little housekeeping, just to remind folks. Everyone in these two sections are registered voters and you must have checked in to be sitting here. Everyone on the benches over there on the side or in the back are non-voters, they're visitors, or they could be residents who are not registered to vote. So if you haven't registered, you need to be out of these two sections. These are the areas where we have the voters. As moderator tonight, my job is to see that we move through all the articles on the warrant, that the discussion follows the rules of debate and that votes are properly counted and recorded. The job of town meeting is to see that we take decisions on all the articles here. That's what we're here for tonight. We're going to talk about the articles, but ultimately we have to make decisions about the business of the town for the coming year. With me tonight at the front of the room, you asked for it. With me tonight at the front of the room is the Finance Committee, our Town Clerk, Town Attorney, the Town Treasurer, Town Accountant, and the Board of Selectmen. Just want to remind you of the way that we deal with the warrants. I will ask for a motion, typically the motion is made by the Finance Committee and then I'll ask for a second. We'll allow the Finance Committee a moment to explain what the motion is about, the purpose of the motion, and then I will open it up for questions from the floor. If you have a question, please raise your hand and wait until I call upon you. You're going to be addressing your comments to me. Don't address it to the members of the Finance Committee or if you're commenting on somebody, wait before you go. Turn and talk to them, talk to me. There's a microphone here on this stand, we don't think it works. Okay, good. If you can come up please and use that microphone or we'll get it back to you if you're not able to leave your seat. If this is difficult for you, just let us know, we'll get the microphone to you because we want to make sure everyone can hear you. Please state your name and your street and address. You don't have to give us the number, just what the street is, Paul McMillan Road, Highland Avenue, whatever. Speak, just for a couple of moments, because we have a lot of business to get through tonight. Ask a question, make a comment on it. We can talk about the article, but we don't talk about people or personalities. So no comments about other people, no comments about people by name or personalities. And we'll run through that. When it sounds to me like we're pretty much repeating things or we've got all the answers out, I will move on to the vote. We're trying to get a breadth of ideas, not the same thing over and over. The vote will tell us how many people thought that, what you thought. Remember that we're trying to be courteous tonight and civil. If there's a problem with that, I will call for order in the meeting if we can take steps to maintain civil discourse. The meeting is usually not a problem in Phillipsville. In some other named counties, it can sometimes be difficult for folks. And with that, I think we are about ready to go. I'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant articles. Is there a second?
Second.
So motion to move and seconded to dispense with the reading of the warrant articles. This means that we're not going to read all the warrants. You have the warrant in your hand, so we won't read them through. You'll just be able to follow along as we move through the meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Article one.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion Article one as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Article one as written. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Mr. General, is the now the warrant?
This is the choice of our town officers and committees. Article one. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Article two.
Mr. Moderator, the motion that Article two as written, deleting our act of relation there to...
Second.
Moved and seconded to receiving reports of town officers and committees. We have a report from the Selectmen pursuant to Article 24 of last year's annual town meeting. Is there a report from the Selectmen?
Yes, there is. At last year's, at last year's annual town meeting, the board was asked to look into the feasibility cost of providing one half the premium for health care for our retired, full-time employees. This benefit would become a long-term liability and we would need to establish a trust fund. And that here, a report would need to be done to determine what we would need to put into the trust. That report costs between five and six thousand dollars and would need to be done every two years. The estimate of the required trust fund principal is five hundred to six hundred thousand. Could be paid all at once or over time. Once it's fully funded, the interest only could be used to pay the benefits. And if that's not enough, the rest would have to be raised and appropriated. At this time, the Select Board does not recommend that we take this action. And I meant to say at first, this is a handout we've had, this is a handout that we were given when we came in.
Among the handouts, among the handouts that were on the table when we came in the building, there was a two-sheet handout that looked like a memorandum and a physical report. Are there any questions on the Selectmen's report? I have a motion to accept the Selectmen's report and place it in the file. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. Adopted unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion Article three as written, deleting or acting relation there to...
Second.
Article three has been moved and seconded. This is, this is you, would you explain this just briefly?
This allows for a member who has been elected or elected as a clerk, the two-way board, I'm sorry, to also be the clerk of that committee. We need to adopt the statute as per chapter 268a, section 28, to allow that to happen. Otherwise, it could be a conflict if you have to adopt that in order to allow a member of your board or committee to also be a clerk. Can you hear me back there, I apologize? No? Can you say that how that is done now? Alright, so what this does is it allows a member of a board or committee to also act as a clerk for that committee, which is normally a paid position. The way that the law is written is that it's not normally allowed unless a town adopts this particular, chapter 268a, section 21a, to allow that to happen. And since we're a small town, it's hard to have multiple people around and this is something that happens.
Are there any questions about this article? Hearing none, all those in favor of the article say aye. Oppose say nay. Majority agrees. Article four.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion Article four as written, deleting or acting relation there to...
Second.
Article four has been moved and seconded. Is there an explanation, please?
This will allow the board of selectmen to apply for grants to that benefit. From the back end, we'll ask the question, is there an authorized body who can approve this grant? And it just puts the approval of the town. It does not allow the Select Board to appropriate funds, the funds to spend. It only allows us to apply for money that we have within these grants.
Are there any questions about that? All those in favor of the article, this aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Carried unanimously. Article five.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion Article five as written, deleting or acting relation there to...
Second.
This article allows the town to borrow and anticipate the anticipation of revenue so that our revenues incoming fall short of what we have to pay, but we know that the technicals are fully leading up to it. This is a motion that needs to be passed in order to allow the church to borrow and it's a short-term thing and it really has to be resolved, but I don't think it's necessary.
Are there any questions about that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the article say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion Article six as written, deleting or acting relation there to...
Second.
This article allows us to borrow funds against the chapter 90 funds that we will be receiving for highway reimbursement. Out of chapter 90, I believe.
Are there any questions about that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the article say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Carried unanimously. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion Article seven as written, raising and appropriating one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, deleting or acting relation there to...
Second.
This is you, would you give an explanation, please?
These are the elected town officers positions and the corresponding salaries, what we call stipends that go along with those positions.
Are there any questions about these articles? These items, then? You're going to have to stand up and use the mic, we have the same problem you do with hearing them.
Liam Royer standing as I. Just a question as to why the collector's account went up and there was one other one in Plano. I know you said stipends, is that the case and Plano went up also?
Some of the changes from FY19 to FY20, which have to do with changes that were made with the wage and compensation plan. So those, I know for certain the tax collector and I don't recall the planning board was one of them, someone wants to confirm that, was part of the wage and compensation adjustments that were done, that condition. And that is what happened with the adjustment. Don't recall the planning board. And when the request went up, we actually baselined it back to the previous year's baseline. So even though the request is up, we did bring it back to the baseline. And that's, yeah, and that was, and I apologize because I've been looking at the whole column. Both of those we brought back to the baseline, so that was what the difference was. Okay, and yes, my motion is to vote on the FinCom recommendation numbers.
Among the handouts, there's a sentence that says Finance Committee Recommendations. Looks like that. When you open it up, it's going to have numbers recommended for the various budget items. This is you, this is the motion, is to vote on the FinCom recommended budget number. Which is to essentially to level fund those numbers.
So Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend my motion so that we are clear of the original motion. So the amended motion, the amendment in particular, would be to recommend, as written in the FinCom, FY20 recommendations column, which appears on the Finance Committee recommendations sheet, and raise and appropriate one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, deleting or acting relation there to...
Okay, if you look on page two of those recommended numbers, and it says Article seven, elected town officers, you'll see that final column totals one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. That's the number we'll be voting on, the total, and that's the way it'll be distributed. So we're going to vote first on the amendment, remanding our original motion to correct these numbers to make sure that we're, we all understand we're voting on these numbers. Sorry about that. So we're going to ask you to vote aye if you want to correct it to these numbers, nay if you don't want to correct. All those in favor of correcting the numbers to what you just gave us, say aye. All those opposed to correcting the numbers to what you just gave us, say nay. Okay, carried unanimously. Now we can have a new discussion, we want to have about the particular numbers. Any questions about any particular number here? Hearing none, all those in favor of the article as amended, say aye. Oppose say nay. Carried unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion Article eight, as presented in the FinCom FY20 recommendations column on the Finance Committee recommendations sheet. And raise and appropriate one billion, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and transfer from WPAT, seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars for a total request of two million, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, deleting or acting relation there to...
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to raise and appropriate one million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, transfer from WPAT, seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars for a total request of two million, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the general operating expenses for FY20 to be distributed as shown in the Finance Committee's recommendations. There's going to be discussion. This is what we're going to do, I'm going to go through these line by line. If you have a question, just say hold, I'm going to see who that is, I'm going to take your name so I know who called, I'm going to come back. Agricultural Commission. Animal Control. Board of Appeals. Board of Assessments. Board of Health. Board of Selectmen. Who says that, who says that? Building Department. Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Cemetery Commission. Conservation Commission. Council on Aging. Dispatch Services. Emergency Management. Finance Committee. Is that pleased? Fire Department. Highway.
Question.
Historical Commission. Inspector of Barnes and the Animals. Library. Moderator. PMPS Building Committee. Planning Board. Police Department. Recreation. Sorry, I don't know your name, sir. Recreation?
Chris. Police Department.
Police Department, okay. Recreation? Tax Collector. Town Accountant? Town Clerk? Treasurer?
Question.
Tree Guardian? Veterans Services. Okay? We'll go back to the first one of those. Board of Selectmen, Tim, you have a question?
Yes. Now, Tim Haley, Myrtle Road, select. Tim Haley? Tim Haley?
Tim Haley, Myrtle Road. Last year, the amount approved for the Selectmen's salary was eighty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two after the wage adjustment. This year it's listed as ninety-two thousand, three hundred and five. And then we have a recommendation of ninety-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five. Just kind of like to know why everybody else's was level funded, but this one actually went up and was actually approved before it was even brought to the recommendation.
So, from my understanding, you were speaking to the board of the committee. Last year's was approved at town meeting. Then we had the wage and compensation article. And with various adjustments that were done based on the wage and compensation plan, monies were moved around to different departments, which I believe would have gotten to the baseline in the end. Last, what was the number, eighty-two? Eighty-four, two oh three. So the question is, eighty-four, two oh three to the new baseline of ninety, man? Ninety-four, one fifty-five. What, my memory serves in a mess, does anyone else do also speak up if they remember? Because part of this was due to the increase in town hall secretary position that we would be utilizing that position for additional, um, and not the secretary. And I'm also having whispered that the clean lay, the each and characters, it was consolidated into this number, which also would show, so we have to go back to put those individual lines in to add the month of it and change, we changed, and that will bring it up. So that's going to change that starting number as well. Is it during a separate fine item, you can go to your report? Add those in, I think that can be the part of that difference. If you have a clear note, I can take the time and go, hold the numbers if that's...
Finance Committee, Mr. Hamilton.
My question on the reserve fund is, this fund in the past has been... My question on the reserve fund is, this fund in the past has been in the lower number and the Finance Committee hasn't been using it to actually subsidize any department. It's come to us for a need and we just don't see the need, but keeping it that high at a reduced number, it may benefit some other department, which still would be expected.
I do know that last year it was fifty thousand, I believe the year before it was fifty thousand as well. I'm sorry, last year it was fifty thousand and I believe the year before it was fifty thousand. It may have been three or four years ago, I don't remember the exact time, I don't have it with these notes. That was getting raised it to the fifty. So I can think that's what I can tell you about the baseline as far as when it's been fifty, it was fifty thousand, now we're reducing it down to forty. Yeah, I think it was a small amount of the use of last year, I don't remember off the top of my head. This is, the FinCom Reserve is an emergency fund that has monies readily available for emergencies that we did not anticipate. That would not be covered by insurance type of events. So we keep this amount of money around just in case. If we had a larger emergency like the ice storm, obviously all bets are off. So these funds are kept as a reserve and a readily available reserve. The FinCom evaluates a request to ensure that whatever monies are asked for qualifies under the parameters of, was it an emergency, was it anticipated or not? And we have lively discussion about those parameters and then we vote on whether or not to give monies to any department requesting it. So that's the purpose of the fund in case anyone was unaware. I already was telling you that in, in general, in the state, for most towns, it's three-quarters of one percent of the overall town budget, which factors out to about thirty-six thousand dollars. So we're, we're in the ballpark of what the recommended, recommended FinCom Reserve number would be by the guidelines and the bare of most towns do. Any monies not set, we'll follow the process of all monies not set. They go back in, they get certified and come back as free cash. So it's not as if we don't use them, we do, we do get them back as free cash.
Anything else on that? Tim?
One of the things we also have told everybody, the different departments coming up is, if they keep their budget a little bit lower, we, you know, keep the FinCom Reserve just in case they run into problems. And otherwise they would pad their budgets to make sure that they had enough to buy whatever they needed. And if they, they don't have it, they might not come and ask us for it, which is better than having it and then just giving it all turned back and it's free cash. So, and they know if they come to see us, they have to beg us for it, to get it. And it kind of keeps it a little bit lower also.
Anything else on that line up? Okay. Highway, Dave.
Alright, my name's Dave Manny. I actually work on the Highway Department, I live on Royalson Road. And I recommend we reduce the payroll of the Highway Department, at least forty-one thousand dollars. What this figure is saying, we are going to hire another person. And I don't feel that the Highway Department needs another employee. Apparently because the town is strapped already for cash, because we're going to be doing an override later in advocacy. So I'd like to reduce the one eighty-four, whatever the cost of a fourth employee to be on the highway. I don't know if the Finance Committee will run those numbers. Because I believe you have an extra guy and you also have... Because I believe you have an extra guy, and you also have a wage comp in that one-eighty-four, four twelve. Um, and I don't know if there's another line that is associated with a new hire, like the group of health, can life jump that much because of this? But anything related to a new hire, I would like to amend the article to remove that salary from that line item of the Highway Department. Thank you.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the article to reduce that said employee's salary from this figure of one-eighty-four, four twelve, which I'm hoping the Finance Committee will have to... Town.
We need a number.
Well, the Finance Committee should have it. Well, I'll go with forty-one thousand dollars.
Or you can now start.
Or bring it back to the one-forty... But see, I don't know what the wage comp is, that, the Finance Committee should have. But otherwise, I just recommend it leaving at one-forty-three, four, five, five, one.
That's your motion, take number one, forty-three, five, five, one.
Correct.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have an amendment to the article to reduce the Highway payroll line item from one-eighty-four, four twelve to one-forty-three, five, five, one in order to eliminate the proposed additional help for the Highway Department. Is there any discussion on this? I see Mr. Teddy in the background, the Highway Superintendent, so I'm going to go to him first. Sorry, Derek.
Hi, folks. Uh, my name is Rick. Teddy, I'm the Highway Superintendent. And, uh, obviously, uh, he is an employee of mine, and I respect his opinion. Uh, we have plenty of work to be done at the Highway. Uh, sometimes things take a little bit longer because there's only three of us. Uh, one of us doing payroll and Dylan, all the other things that go along. Uh, we also have vacation time and sick time and stuff like that. Uh, so there's a lot of times that we are very shorthanded. Um, I was asked if I thought we could use another employee, and I, we honestly could. Uh, but if the taxpayers are not ready for that, and it's not the time, I completely understand and respect what you, you know, want to do. As long as you don't mind waiting a little bit longer for something to get fixed or treaty get cut or a pump get built, uh, it's fine with me. So, whatever you folks choose, um, I have no problems with David's comments and his opinion, so. Thank you.
Okay.
Seconding Flint Lake Corner Road. Um, my question is to the Treasurer, the Auditorium, how much money is spent in overtime for the DPW?
Sorry, second? Around thirty thousand dollars a year in overtime. So... Mr. Moderator, so... Well, you're going to have to wait till local comes back, and then you can...
I was looking for something, but I knew you were talking about nothing that you're going. Is there something, is there something here that we're missing?
Just going to take a second to confront some people. Question is, is the overtime coming out of snow and ice? The answer is some of it is and some of it isn't, but we can't talk right here. Is there another question?
Tom Roy of Samuel Drive. If they go with the, um, approved F-19, um, budget, does that mean that they're going to waive any raises or kind of level fund this year?
My understanding is that the numbers here are level funded wages. The next article, which is nine, a one grants a two-and-a-half percent across-the-board increase to all employees, which is so long. So, this is, this is just a level fund. Tim? Uh, it shows that last year's approved amount was one-forty-three, five, fifty-one for the Highway Department. Then they had a six thousand, one hundred and three, ninety-two cents as their wage comp, which brought the total up to one-forty-nine, six, fifty-four, ninety-two. So, that's what their budget for this year actually is, not the one-forty-three, five, five, one. So, could I amend David's?
No, no. If I vote on the first.
Hold on now. We need to vote on this amendment. Yeah. So, what we can do is, we can vote on this amendment. All right. We're going to, we're going to take, we're going to take a vote on this amendment. The number that was proposed, which was to amend this Highway number from one-eighty-four, four twelve to one-forty-three, five, five, one. That one-forty-three, five, five, one is not actually what the number is now after the wage adjustment that was made this year. So, we're going to vote whether you want to amend back to that number. And then, I believe Mr. Haley is going to make, after we decide on that, we'll make another amendment to change it to one-forty-nine, six, fifty-five, which is the actual number that we got this year. We've got to go step by step on this. So, all those in favor of amending the Highway payroll line item from one-eighty-four, four twelve to one-forty-three, five, five, one, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, I think I need the tellers. We're going to have a count for that, so. So, all those who say aye in favor of changing the number from one-eighty-four, four twelve to one-forty-three, five, five, one, please stand and remain standing until the teller says sit down. Please to see. Thirty-five. All those opposed to changing the number, please stand and remain standing until the tellers say sit down. Motion failed. Tim, do you want to make your motion to set it back to this year's level funded number? Or do you want to leave it the way it is? The one-eighty-four, four twelve? Yes. Okay, so you don't want to make your motion? Okay. Any other discussion on this side? I'm sorry, Ronnie, you want to say something? Farther away. Don't do that, sorry. Page.
Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to the Highway payroll. One-eighty-four, four, one, two, to one-forty-nine, six, five, five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to amend the payroll from one-eighty-four, four twelve to one-forty-nine, six, fifty-five. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we'll ask the tellers to come back, please. All those in favor of reducing the Highway payroll number from one-eighty-four, four twelve to one-forty-nine, six, fifty-five, please stand and remain standing until the tellers say sit down. Please to see. All those opposed to changing the number from one-eighty-four, four twelve to one-forty-nine, six, fifty-five, say aye. Please stand and remain standing. Motion failed. Plenty more, Bernie?
Okay, my question is to the Finance Committee. I'm Bernie Mallow on the Planet Board. Also, I'm the one Peter Samuel of the Phils. Anything else, sir? Okay, so my question is, the Planet Board had voted a project that we sent to the Finance Committee. And we had a carryover amount for twenty-three thousand or some change that was from previous years that we've been working on zonal bylaw differences. And I'm here tonight, and I see the amount was reduced to five thousand dollars. Um, that's really not going to get us anywhere. It's kind of hard to have a public fair if you're zoning changes, you know, with, with that kind of, um, funding. My understanding was the thought was we could go to the Finance Committee and say, hey, we have an emergency, we've got to do some bylaw work. And if they may give us the money, they may not. Well, we're not going to start working on something not knowing that we can pay the consultants, uh, who actually do the work. We, we have a few situations. One of them is the campus bylaws that they passed. Um, they're ever changing. We may need to change it again next year. There's an article at, at the end, people can see it tonight. Um, any one of those things can actually run over that kind of funding. So, again, this money is not money we're asking for like, like rates or corporate issues. We're trying to carry it over for previous years, which we've been doing for the past five years. All of a sudden, this year, we can't carry it over. We need to re-bolting because the money goes to free cash. Um, I'm not sure the account process on that one. And, like, so what I'm asking is for the people to, to give us the money that we want to carry over, that the Planet Board had asked. At some point, that may go back to the town, and we're all done doing the zoning, uh, bylaw reductions. But at this point, we're, we're not completely there. So, again, we're not asking for anything that we didn't have before, it was already in the accounts. It's there now, we're just asking, um, to, to refund the money because it's going to go back to free cash, that twenty-three thousand dollars that we had to bring up.
Is that correct, the Finance Board?
Sure, if I could, would I just explain what you meant? So, first off, you have to understand that we have appropriated on the various articles over many years, I believe it was a five thousand dollar or eight, eight thousand dollar amount.
Ten hundred.
Then that, well, there was, there was a full series of articles over many years, um, that was spent over by law. Because the type of expenses that the Planet Board works on don't really qualify now to be rolled over. Typically, you have a contract that extends over multiple years for a specific project. Technically, those funds don't belong to the local town. I'm just going to check with my accountant. Treasurer, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, that is why those monies now, I feel this means that we really should not be carrying them as ball over amounts. So, at the end of this year, whatever hasn't been spent in those articles that have been previously appropriated, maybe if I speak, if you could tell me what the amounts are on all those accounts, that would be great, so I can make sure I'm keeping them. Um, to make sure I've still that twenty-three thousand. Um, those will net out and end up being in our free tal, free cash calculation. So, what we need to do for this coming year is budget appropriately so the Planet Board can have funds to work on. The Planet Board came to us with requests of just the amount of the ball over amount. We had asked for information on what Planet Board would be working on, um, some kind of estimate on, on what it would cost. When we also went back and we gave them information on what they've spent over this past year. They had a heavy year last year with a lot of work on bylaw changes and the like. And I'm going to get to the accountant and the treasurer again. And I'm going to get to the accountant and the treasurer again because they don't have a number in front of me of what was spent last year for all of that work.
Before the accountant speaks, the accountant is not a member of the town meeting, so we need to give permission to. Is there objection to the town accountant speaking before town meeting? Harry, now, do you want to answer?
So 2018 was spent 2,124. And so far this fiscal year, $2,598 has been spent. And the previous three years, there was nothing spent during those years.
So once we received those numbers and looked at what we thought was the original amount of money to fund the account with about $5,000, we needed, because we did not receive any firm numbers back from the planning board on what they were going to be working on in this coming year. And that is where that $5,000 came from. From what they've spent in the past, looking for what they're working on. And that's what the finance committee is recommending. And I'll look to my other finance committee members if we can, one more to add anything to that.
If there's anybody else who has a question on this, or you want to make an amendment to change the number. So you're moving to change the number to... Is there a second? Moved and seconded to change the consultant line item number to $20,000. Under the planning board. Is there any other discussion? You can't turn, so let me see if there's anybody else. Anybody else from the finance committee wishes to speak to this? Anybody from the audience who wants to address this? I'm sorry, there is, I see somebody in the audience now. Sorry, votes.
I'm not exactly clear, I'm sorry, this is Rose Prusell, I live in Commonwealth. I'm not exactly clear about where that carryover money comes from, if that could be explained to you.
So where that money comes from is in previous years, and I don't have them all listed out, but in prior town meetings, for prior fiscal years, we had an article on the one that allocated X amount of dollars, I think some years it was 10,000, some other 3,000 for planning board activity. And as I said, this year, looking at those funds and the definition of how they should be used, whether qualified as a roll over amount or really needs to be returned to free cash like other expensive accounts do, they really don't belong in a revolving account. Because typically, those are contractual things like, um, the good one, if we have a project in progress that might have some bills, so we have some monies for something, we would carry that over till the project is done. In this case, we don't have a specific project that's in contract. So whatever bylaws come up with the planning board says, "Hey, we need to really look at this and so forth." So that's why those money's didn't qualify. Do you have any questions?
I'd ask the accountant just to explain how that contract limit works.
So when you have carryover money, like for articles like this, the DOR requires that you have a signed contract. So example, the accessories rebound, that you have to do every three to five years. It's five years now. So when the town meeting puts money for that article, it's used in preparation for that, and they have the contract ready to go with the contractor to do those rebounds. That is a legitimate use for a special article carryover in the general fund. So that's the purpose of that. And for the planning board, the discussion was because they do not have a contract with a, you know, specific person, that it can't just be used whenever they need it each year. It's not, um, there is no contract, so it can't be just carried over year in year like a savings account would be used. That's not what the meant, what is meant for that.
Anything else from the audience? Ronnie, you have anything else to contribute? I'm trying to finish.
Okay, so what happens is, sometime ago, we got a quote from the MI Secretary, I think this was like five years ago, for $50,000 to do the work that apparently we did for $5,000, which is remarkable. The planning board's been like going through all this stuff, and we proposed some stuff last year, which is good, but we've been doing this on our own. We do get a spike, but it's pretty small. And then we've been using town council, which I believe is, they'd run the contractor to tell, "Why wouldn't that money even be carried over for use of someone that's already contracted with the town?" That would be a question that could be, uh, pretty powerful.
It's because you would have to have a full contract signed, like you said, like for 50,000, a contract that you would have signed with town council that they were providing you with $50,000 worth of work. And you don't have that, it's just a case by case basis. So it's used every year, every bill, just like the town does.
I think we've had, we've had a good discussion. This is, Tim? And also, this is one of those things that the finance committee has a reserve account for. If they did run into that, they could come out of that. Okay, let's take a vote, I think we've discussed this one enough. All those in favor of the amendment to change the planning board consultant line item from 5,000 to 20,000, say aye. All those opposed, they nay?
Nay.
Carries my majority. Police department, David? Do you, the amendment say aye, excuse me?
Hi, my name's Chris Sawyer, Woodston Road. I just want to ask, is this a, the 40,000 plus raise, is this a full-time employee? I'd just like to know what this is for, basically.
I'm going to ask Chief Dodge to answer that, the chief is not a member of the town meeting. Is there an objection to the chief answering the question? Chief, why don't you come on up, please? Please have your seat.
Thank you. This is in fact, an effort to put on another full-time officer. Where, we've been looking at the officer for a few years with, primarily, we both in a part-time agency. But with the amount of people that we have, we have full-time jobs. Sometimes shifts at the last minute will go unfilled at weekends. And we understand that people's full-time careers come first, but as we see things move forward, there's a likelihood that this is going to be a marijuana retail facility in Phillipsburg with the potential of a cultivation facility. So we're trying to plan for that now by having a full-time officer that would give us three. I just see the way things are going, if we had that other officer, there would be less potential for unfilled shifts. We still have our part-time officers, but we rely more heavily on another full-time officer.
You have a chance, I'm going to just see if there's anybody else first. Okay, we'll take turns. Stephanie?
My question is to you, Stephanie Flynn, Blake Flynn wrote again. I'm going to ask the moderator, but my question again is how much overtime is required in this department?
So Sergeant Chapman's the only full-time officer that we have that gets overtime. And that could vary in the two-week pay period, it could be, it could be 20 hours, it could be 35 hours. So to speak to the overtime question, there's only one officer, Sergeant Chapman, who is eligible for overtime. So in a two-week pay period, he could be anywhere, it could be 18 hours, it could be 30 hours, it could be 35 hours, it's unpredictable. Part-time officers, obviously, they're not eligible for overtime, and I'm not eligible for overtime.
I would just like to give some information on the cost differential of level servicing the police department adds in versus adding the full-time patrol officer as presented to the finance committee by Chief Dodge. Again, as he commented, we're adding a full-time officer, but we're also reducing some of those part-time shifts. So the net impact is not a full officer. The net impact is actually only adding, it's $33,555 to where you can be level serviced for this year. So it's not adding a, you know, a full person. We are taking down some of the part-time because that full-time officer will cover those shifts.
For this fiscal year so far, it is $15,000. Other question, just a minute.
Parker Yule, Woodston Road. I'm just curious why we couldn't take two part-time officers and give them a full-time position?
So in order to give two, just one clear, two officers make them full-time to part-time officers? So if you want to do that, we're going to have to have the eligible part-time officer that would want to be a full-time officer, which, like I said, the majority of our part-time officers have full-time employment on the basis of that. That is kind of the plan of what we're doing here. As we go forward, we can get a full-time officer, and it's really, I don't say this to be heartless, but I just say it, the people that want to work, that want to be part of the department, will step up and do that. And we have to think of the service of the town. You know, it's the officers, they're important, they do the job, they provide the service. But it's service of the town first. And that's what we're trying to, we're just trying to keep and increase the service of the town by doing this week. I know in the past, banks had been exploring, using cost grants when they were available, to try and get another person, it never happened. And we just see the way things are going. Like I said, historically, it's always been comfortable, because no one's known it's been due to some part-time agencies. We have two full-time employees, we've worked very well, but as things, where things are going, we've got some people that are going to retire from their full-time jobs, they're potentially, they could retire from our department. So we're just trying to plan and add it, so that our service doesn't sustain. Well, I understand what you're saying, and maybe I may be a little bit, if you look at it, if you understand that, we hire a full-time person. And we know that his personnel on the horizon that within a year or two will, you know, move on or they've expressed other interests, so that's really the best that I can do with that. We're just trying to, you know, kind of keep things moving forward.
And I think just to clarify an answer on your question, which may be a more financial answer, which is what we're looking for, and Chief Dodge probably isn't wrong, we don't have, we say full-time, it doesn't mean they're working 20 hours a week. So you can't just take two 20-hour workers and make them a full-time person. Chief Dodge, I believe, has people who work maybe five hours a week, 10 hours the next. It's really as good as required for the shifts. So I think that maybe answered your question a little bit better.
I'd like to know if this police department is 24 hours a day on downtime?
We are part-time, we've never been 24/7. We man, we man our shifts from between 6:00 and 7:00 AM. Some days we'll go till midnight. On average, during the week, it goes till 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, 13:00.
Can I ask another question on that? Follow-up? My first agent is about 39 years old. We have one piece of police, and we get the whole thing one through. We have 1,700 people in this town. We have 1,700 a day. Why do we need so many police and so many guys? What's different?
I, I have one key. I'm going to answer that this way, this is not 39 years ago. We had, this is not 39 years ago. We have three vehicles, which are effectively maintained. We get a new vehicle roughly every five years, but the turnover on the vehicle that gets turned over is between eight, nine years old. The things that we do with today weren't the things that we dealt with 39 or 40 years ago. It's just, it's just simple numbers. Just because it doesn't have those, the things that are going on around us, we have to be, everybody is ready to do the things of Apple, Gartner, Templeton, and all these other communities.
39 years ago, Jeff Edwin allowed to do things to women that you're not allowed to do today. You get arrested for it, we're not going there. Dave? Because I'm the moderator. My microphone.
David D. Robson wrote, Chief Dodge had mentioned the marijuana facility possibly preparing for that. Does marijuana place supposed to pay for the office there? Is that going to be in the contract or the evidence? I'm under the understanding that they would have to pay for an office to direct traffic or, or to stay in line, make sure nobody's getting, I don't know if it answers that question. And I believe that facility is going to take a few years to roll out. So is it possible we could revisit this current position and another? So is it possible we can revisit this current position and another?
I just wanted to answer Jeff's question, is what's changed? We have a market back that plows down the road that creates a lot of traffic, a lot of people coming through our town. We have marijuana, retail stores coming into town. There were two school shootings in this country this week. That could happen here, it could happen anywhere. Opioid addiction, this is on and on and on, a lot has changed in that run of time.
Make a motion, we've moved the question. Want to a question, George, you know? We don't have a motion on the floor at the moment, other than the main motion. I'm gonna hold your motion for a second, because we're gonna have to adjust, there's an earlier dollar figure change. And so the main motion doesn't have the correct dollar figure. So we're gonna have to make an adjustment to the hundred dollar figure. There was a question on the treasure.
Since the full-time highway position didn't happen, should we take some away from the treasures group health? And I'm not sure about the timing of that change, that full-time position.
The original motion figure is now being correct. So we're gonna take a second, and this is Hughes, who's gonna give us the correct number as an amendment to the original motion. Yes?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion that we adjust the group health lifeline under the treasure section from one fifty-seven, two fifty, down to one thirty-seven, two fifty, to accommodate the decrease of the full-time highway department personnel that we have added and a potential health insurance plan for. And that would make that a adjustment in conjunction with the reduction of that full-time highway staff that we were going to have and have now taken out by previous forces.
Move and seconded, any discussions about reducing the group health and life insurance line item from one fifty-seven, two fifty, to one thirty-seven, two fifty? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes. We'll go to the main item.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend the motion to, let's correct it. To recommend, as presented in the same time FY20 recommendation column, as contained in the Finance Committee's resolution sheet, with an adjustment to the Highway Department payroll, the new number there would be one forty-nine, sixty-five, and with an adjustment to the treasurer group health lifeline, which would now be one thirty-seven, two hundred and fifty, we would raise and appropriate one million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We will transfer from WPH to seven thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars for a total request of one million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars.
We'll give it a second. Been moved and seconded, I'm not even trying to deny it, but the total is one million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars. In total, as an amended figure, would be adjustments that have been passed in the last few minutes. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Majority passes. Article eleven. Oh, that page went quick. First, page nine.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to, that continues. Motion, this article as written, replace, raise and appropriate a sum of money, but raise and appropriate twenty-six thousand dollars and the week's work in each active relation mention.
Movement seconded to adopt article line as credit at twenty-six thousand dollars. So any discussion, this is Hughes. Any discussion, all those in favor of article nine? Say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Majority will passes. Article ten. Article ten.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion the article as written, we then will ask for the relation mention.
Article ten's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
This is, we are over the customary article for the ambulance receipts reserve account. Remember last year we changed, and we are counting for the ambulance in this one account, so we have to appropriate sixty thousand dollars for the ambulance to utilize.
Any questions, any discussion on this article? Any of you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion article eleven, as written, raising and appropriating one million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand and ninety-nine dollars, deleting or acting relation mention.
Article eleven has been moved and seconded as credited in the warrant. Is there any discussion, this is Hughes, you can respond.
This is the operating budget for the American Business School District, of course, unfortunately.
Any questions about this article?
I just wanted to ask, Moderator, can we add to that the money we saved for most raising coffee on the highway and the health field? And then lower the override amount?
I'm gonna let Town Council answer that question, if there's no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If you respond to the question, the override amount is already printed in the ballot, so that will be the amount of money that will be raised, or will be eligible to be raised by override. That increases the town's levy limit to that increased amount if the override passes. The town, however, does not need to spend up to its levy limit, so you can spend less money than that if you choose to, but your levy limit is set at that high, if it passes.
So I do put on this application, if in fact we amended this article to include the amount of money at fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars to the baseline article eleven, and still then, if the four of us, if so, chooses to pass the two-and-a-half override, we would then not have to tax on the full amount of the override. Is that what I'm hearing you saying? That we would need to amend article eleven, so that we'd like to make that happen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The question that would be before the voters is whether or not to increase the, essentially, your levy limit to enable the town to raise an additional ninety-three thousand dollars of change. If that gets approved, then your levy limit is increased by that amount. Ultimately, you do not have to spend to your levy limit, so the town can choose to spend less money. However, your levy limit is set at that amount, essentially, whatever.
And what are questions, Tom? Great. All those in favor of the article as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Majority passes. Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to amend. Article twelve is written, raising and appropriating ninety-three thousand fifty-three dollars, and according to article twelve as printed, deleting or acting relation mention.
Article twelve has been moved and seconded as credited in the warrant. Is there any discussion, this is Hughes, you can give your answer.
Questions, I guess we can address them later.
We'll go to this gentleman here, David, nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard G. Knight, forty-five, Morrison Road. I just have a couple of brief comments. The schools and the school committee have come before us to make an ask, my family and yours, to make a sacrifice, a financial sacrifice. They're asking for us to support a budget that requires an override to fund a building project that Hank Phillips has already declared that we're not funding. They're asking again, but this time it comes with ultimatums attached. Pass the override, or we'll cut teachers, consolidate the elementary schools, and turn the Phillipsden Elementary into a combined kindergarten. Bust your children to, excuse me, and bust your elementary age children to Templeton. The result will be long bus rides and larger class sizes for all children. In my opinion, that would result in a lesser education for those children. I will be voting to support the override, but not because I approve of it. I am in fear of losing my community's elementary school. I feel there's a good chance, and a lot of you feel the way that I do, however, I don't feel, that Templeton feels the same. I'm holding in my hand a document, that I would hope to see here, but I didn't, titled FY20 Final Budget Presentation, March sixth, PPS. On page nineteen of that document, a page titled General Fund Salary Comparison, is listed a salary increase for FY20 of eight hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. If this budget override fails in either community, eliminating this item would all but eliminate the shortfall of the budget. I hope that our elected school committee, I don't know who they are, so I'm talking to Mr. Moderator. Fantastic. Will support the community they represent, and make it known that Phillipsden, under no circumstances, will allow the elementary schools to be consolidated. Furthermore, I would recommend that they encourage this administration to waive the one percent salary increase, which would nearly eliminate the need for an override. In closing, I'd like to remind the school committee that they are elected officials whose role is to support the values of the community they serve. If there is any question on what those values are, let it be known. This community values the Phillipsden Memorial Elementary School in its current configuration, its teachers, its small class sizes, and its ample outdoor space. To my fellow community members, I hope that you will hold the school committee responsible for this budget and the effects of it on our treasured community resource, the Phillipsden Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other questions, Tom? David.
David Andy Robson wrote, I think this article was a horrible idea, putting it as an override. This override will never come off our taxes. I don't understand why it was considered, why an override, every year we can use this override for whatever we want. It doesn't necessarily have to be in school, it could be whatever we feel to blow it on. And it's getting ridiculous in this town, that we keep raising, if we wanna do a two-and-a-half override, but at the end of this, this, one of these articles, at the end of the night, we can have a hundred and one thousand dollars in free cash to put in stabilization. I don't understand why we're not applying the money into toward this ninety-three thousand, and just throw away with the override altogether. away with the override altogether. I don't know, anybody can ask me, but this as an override question? And why wasn't this just done as a, I don't know, thing?
I can address your free cash question.
Mrs. Hughes.
I can address your free cash question. We've asked for you back to the town. It should not ever, should ever be used for any type of required funding. The monies that are, have been asked for by the school district for their operating fund and our ongoing expenses, and as part of this override, the ongoing expenses, why an override is being asked for. If you apply free cash to that, what happens if we don't have enough free cash to cover some of our ongoing expenses each year? Then we would have to find places to try. So that's just an accounting principle that you follow. We don't use your free cash for any type of ongoing expenses. So that answers that part, because I know you were pulling later on, we've got this money we're putting into stabilization. Why couldn't we just call it back towards the, if these are ongoing expenses and next year, in this case, the school has to ask for these funds again? Not more, same funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if I understand this, the override is not really for the Phillipsden residents, it's for Templeton to open their elementary school?
No.
Well, it's to fund the salaries and the budget.
No, I think Dr. Thomas.
Well, my question is, so this year we're having an override to fund it so the school can open in September. And then next year, even though we passed the override this year, the money's not guaranteed to go into the school budget. It goes into the general funds. So, next year again, we're going to be in the same situation. Are you going to come back to us again and ask for another override to run the school district next year? Because nothing's getting changed. We're, they're saying you're going to cut the budget, but have you looked at maybe cutting their salary, no increases this year, open the contracts? The thing is, they keep coming at us, and it's never going to give. Next year, you're going to be back here again, asking for us to fund more things. Love will fund their salaries, open up their contracts, look at other ways.
I think Artic Casman would like to speak. If there's no objection, he's not a member of the town meeting. If there is no objection, we'll let him speak. Artic Casman.
To the gentleman's point, to open the contract, first off, requires the bargain, but let's put that aside and let's say that we do do that. And, or we do do that. I'm not sure we just spoke, but to the point that this keeps coming is exactly one of the reasons that we met last year. I certainly don't want to bring up old or probably difficult information to hear, to talk about. The reorganization committee that was formed last year was for this very reason. What we know in terms of finance, money, this district as a whole is not large enough to have two traditional elementary schools. It's not. K-25. K-25. It's $965,000 with, of salary that comes from this building. Projected, there'll be 111 students here next year. That's if we have 20 kindergarten students, and we never get kindergartens in this building yet. So right now, I think we have 14 that are signed up. I could be off. They come and they go. Of that 111 students, only 71 of them are from Phillipsden. That becomes part of the issue, is that we, we have to have classrooms, we have to fill them. We try to, we can do. We have 65 students, I believe, on the school, the school choice waitlist, and currently, right now, 26 of them are kindergarteners. So, we, this is not a new phenomenon. When all the elementary school folks have not been able to take a school choice student for quite some time. So we do act, tell folks that we have room here. Depending on where they're coming from, where they're driving to, it's just not, it's just not conducive to their, to their, you know, to their busy lives, so they decline. But this is the issue at hand. We will not, I think one of the questions was, how do I know you're not going to come back to us? When asked that by, I think, a Templeton resident, I have to tell you, I can't answer that. Because even if we freeze everybody's salaries this year, okay, even if we were to do that, there is next year. And there's the year after that. That's the issue. So, I, this is a very difficult and hard conversation, especially for the folks of Phillips. I understand that. But in terms of the long-term health of this district overall financially, this is, this is a very important issue. Trust me, when I speak, when I tell you I had seven meetings, we called them coffees, no one was happy to hear this information. Not from Templeton, not from Phillipsden. Because it affects everything. It affects everything that we do. That's why we started the conversation last year. But now here we are. The bill literally is dead.
See if there's anybody else, any other comments?
I guess my question is this, because I know we talked, you know, sending Phillipsden to the new Templeton Elementary School, it's been going on for a year now. And I know Templeton doesn't want it any more than we do. But the sheet paper that we got, it was the budget fact, said that if there is no override, there will be no students in Phillipsden Memorial Elementary School next year. If that is true, that means this school then gets closed by the state, because if you don't utilize it, that's why Templeton Center, the minute they pull those students out, the state said it can no longer be a school. And if we don't have those assurances, if we can still put students here, then we might have, I just don't understand. You're going to force us to go to Templeton. The school district is going to force us to go to Templeton Center School for our elementary, and basically, this is our way of life. This is our community center. And we don't want to lose that. And so, I just hope that if the overrides don't pass, that you do go to the 112 budget and go until December, until the state comes in. I'd rather have the state come in than to take our students out of Phillipsden.
Just a quick comment. If the district is going to force us to send our children to Templeton, maybe it's time for folks in elementary school to leave the district.
Mr. Moderator, can I ask a question?
Hi, Ms. Karissa Moore, Mary Road. I apologize. Who are you?
I'm Chris Catherine, President of School.
Nice to meet you. You mentioned that there are 65 school choice on the waitlist. Did I understand that?
Approximately, yes.
And how much money per student does Templeton receive for each of those school choice?
You all receive the money.
How much money?
$5,000 per student.
And when somebody calls and says, I'm looking for a school choice location, who gives them the information of which school is available?
We do. Central office.
Central office.
Yes.
So there's not a Phillipsden representative there?
There's no, we, through the chair. We have closed Ballinville Elementary School in terms of school choice. That, that is stated when we accept, whether we, well, the school committee decides to accept school choice students. So they will say, we cannot accept anyone between grades two and four at Ballinville Elementary School, or Templeton Center kindergarten, or first grade. But we can, we can accept them six through eight, and, or, you know, six to 12, and that, that's okay.
Okay, so you bring the school choice candidates to the school board, and what is, is that what I understand? Did I understand that? No.
So, so they fill out a form.
Yeah.
And they go on a waitlist.
Yeah.
And we see what we have available, what space we have available.
Let's back up. Are the classrooms in this building full?
No.
Why?
I don't know. I would say the population's.
So when the school choice people call and say, I'm looking for a small town experience for my child, and those make, get an application made, and then they go to a school board? Am I understanding? No. Tell me where, where we're losing that you have 65 on the waitlist and this school's not full.
So, your question is, why aren't they placing them here?
Yeah. Thank you. That's my question.
So we're trying.
What's the problem?
They don't want to come here.
They don't want to see.
So when we say to them, for example, they don't give us a read, they don't say, it's because of this or that, sometimes they'll say, well, drive us too far, etc. I don't remember how many students, if they were five students over the summer, who wanted just to see where the school was. We told them where, because this is the middle of the summertime, so they came down, they visited, and they never, they never filled their applications, so they never came back. So when we have a fourth grade, I'm going to use the fourth grade as an example, because currently there's only 15 kids in the fourth grade here, right now, and I believe only nine residents are in, nine residents from Phillipsden are in that fourth grade class. So there is plenty of room to put students in there. When we have a fourth grade application, we say we're not, we cannot take it Ballinville Elementary School, but we have plenty of room in Phillipsden, and we offer that as well. Some would take them. They don't all say no, because we have something to the effect of, I think, 25 school choice students that are down here. Generally, they've come through of the pre-K and have stayed. But I have to answer this question, though, about where's the money only for Templeton? Folks, remember that when we consolidate, when we talked about last year, the reorganization pardon me, three positions were going to be needed here. One of them was a guidance council. The other was a special education teacher. We filled another position because we had, we had the ability to do that. So, some of that cost for staff are right here, and we knew that. We knew that last year. Sorry, just wanted to make sure.
Just another question. If you have to ship all of our children to Templeton Center, you are now going to have to knock out all those school choice people, right? Because our kids don't deserve priority.
The law is clear. Once we accept the school choice student, they are here. We cannot, we cannot ask them to leave.
So you're going to overcrowd new school if you fold our school and send our children to the education level school down there?
Well, the class sizes will be between 26 and 29. I've been very open about that through the, through, no, no, it's not okay. You're absolutely correct. And this is exactly why we wanted to discuss this last year, and it goes through the process. But it, you know, when we have, we have over a million, $1.1 million deficit, it is the only way in order to make that, to fill that gap, other than a, an override. So that's, that was, that is definitely a concern, because no one is, no one's.
I know I'm jumping ahead, but because we're talking about the school. If I was going to have my house unoccupied for a year, I wouldn't spend $46,800 to install five new three-story beachbacks. I'm, I'm just trying to ask this question. But I wouldn't do that if I was going to send all the kids to Templeton Center.
Let Margaret speak, but in the interest of full disclosure, Margaret is also chair of the school committee? Just so we're clear about that.
I just want to state that, you know, you're saying that the district, the school district is doing this to your kids. What's doing it to the kids is not voting for this override like we have asked. We have spent many hours on this budget to be able to provide an education to our kids, keeping them where they need to be to get the best education. And if you don't vote this override, okay, and I realize that we have another town in our district, if this override doesn't pass in both of the districts, we will force our hands to have to take action as a school committee. We have not voted on anything other than this plan and this budget. Once we get to the point where we're, we've got clear indication from both towns, because obviously we need funding from both towns, then the school committee will reconvene and discuss what needs to be, what needs to happen if you do not vote this override. So, I know you keep saying the district is going to do to your kids. It's, it's partnership here. We need the town to support the school so that we can have what these kids need and keep them educated where they need to be educated.
I'd like to ask you a question about busing kids from Phillipsden to Templeton. A few years back, when we had a different superintendent, they changed some of the bus that were around. And they took some of the kids from Phillipsden and shipped them over to that school, over to Templeton. Are they still doing that? Are those kids now back to this town to fill our own school? Not yours?
Yeah, that's right.
I, I don't know of that situation. I know that if you are a Phillipsden resident and you are K through four, you are here. And pre-K, it's all pre-K, so pardon. If you're a Phillipsden resident, pre-K through four, you go to school here. People, parents can apply to intra-school choice. We have 10 students from Templeton that are here through intra-school choice. And there is one Phillipsden student who intra-school choice into Ballinville at some point. I don't know what year. But I, I don't know anything about that. I'm not aware of it. Is that the middle school, sir? Are we, are we talking about the middle?
It was a superintendent that came from us a few years back. He's just.
Oh, Steve, okay.
He changed some of the surroundings of some of our kids to this town, shipped them to downtown. There's a lot, a couple of kids because they were handicapped. So this time.
So.
So what I'm wondering is, are we losing that base that we couldn't have back in our own school?
So now I understand. Actually, students with disabilities, who have ambulatory issues, wheelchair, etc., they, the agreement, as I understand it, that they, they came here. If there was an exchange, I had never heard about that part, but I can tell you that there's only one company, one student from Phillipsden who intra-school choice from, I don't know if it's the third grade, I could check it, but whatever grade here to there, that was probably a couple of years ago.
I don't believe in intra-school choice. I mean, they're busing there.
I can check in for that. I just, I don't know the other part of the, of the slot. I don't, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Discussion.
Good evening. I'm Dan Sandin from Highland Avenue. When my wife and I moved to Phillipsden 50 years ago, the only school we had was the original building built in 48. And since then, we've added onto the school twice. The first time back in 74. Ballin Rose tells me that the reason we're adding. Ballin Rose tells me that the reason we're adding onto that school is that's the future of our kids, right there. Those kids are the future of this town. Can't hear me? So we added on twice. And each time we added on to the school, it was at the urging of the school committee. Okay, keep that in, in mind, because it was the school committee who requested that we put on the additions. And we stepped up to the plate and we put on the additions. And every year, for a long time now, we've appropriated money at town meeting for repairs on this building. Now, we've stepped up even further on repairs. We've put more money into it every year because we're trying to take care, don't forget, this is an old building now. We also are looking at some serious work to be done on the building. We have a renovation committee put together. One of the big things that we had to do was put a roof on the whole building. But, you know, just like your house, every once in a while, you have to do some repair work. That's the way we handle it. A little bit at a time as we can go along. And we're trying to do it in a timely fashion so that we don't go broke in the meantime.
Anything else from here? Okay.
What are the transportation consequences between transporting our kids from Phillipsden to Templeton, all of our kids that would be moving out of the school, or keeping our kids here in the Templeton, Northern Hilton, or there? What would the difference be in the cost?
So, in terms of, of cost, it certainly wouldn't take any more buses. So, we only run two buses at this time, I want to make sure that we have that correct here, in Phillipsden. Those same buses would then be used to transport to Templeton. So the cost, in a sense, would be negligible. We wouldn't need any extra buses. We, when we contract the bus companies, it's, it's a cost per day. So, three hundred and twenty, three hundred and twenty-five a day, times a hundred and eighty, that kind of thing. So, in, in terms of extra buses or cost, we would not, we would not incur those. I want to make sure that I'm answering your question. I'm not sure if that's the, if that's what we're looking for. Just as an aside, we can never close Phillipsden. We can never. I did say, and have said, the last two months, that this district is too small for traditional K through five, or four or five elementary. It is. But we're not so small that we don't need this building. This building has got to house students. Yes, the, the reorg committee got to the point where we were talking about specific grades, pre-K through K, because we would need not to have seven hundred and thirty-five students assigned to the Templeton Center School, because that's, by the way, what the number would be. That, that is important to understand. We wanted to make sure that that could have happened, transitioned that this year. That's why the conversation took place last year. We need to keep taking in school choice students, folks, and we have to have the room to do that. If we don't, the fixed cost that we take in on school choice is going to have to come back to the debt, which is like health insurance and etcetera. We net seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars on school choice. That is a lot of money. We, we take in two hundred and fifty school choice students. I have sixteen on a waitlist that I'm not even going to be able to touch, because I have ultimately no room to be able to do the high school kids, but ultimately the elementary kids, kids I can't take, because I don't have any room. I need to replace those school choice kids that we lose through graduation, because if I don't, the net goes down. And if the net keeps going down, then I'm not going to be able to apply those fixed costs to school choice, which means, by the way, sixty percent of our entire health insurance, the school's health insurance, is paid out of school choice, including six teacher positions. The lower that number becomes, I have to pull, I say, "Aye," school committee, has to pull those, those positions out. That's outside of the, of the local budget. You're not paying for that. That's why it's so important to have to rethink this and to think about this, because it can go upside down very quickly. I have been in districts where this has gone very wrong. We have to think forward. I love this story. I promised Dan this will always be an elementary school, and I need it. I don't think, it cannot, right now, in terms of our population, it cannot handle a eighty-five. We don't have the students. The census clearly said that.
I've got a couple of questions here for Rose.
Let me try to, may I try to yell?
Go ahead.
I yell pretty good.
Good.
What is the anticipated usage for the Phillipsden school?
So, I can yell, too. So, what we have is, one, the Department of Ed understands that there are certain situations that require emergency kind of, you know, decisions. This school being unoccupied does not, not make it a school. You have to declare it so. So if we close, we close Templeton, it was, I believe, I wasn't here, but there was a vote to say that no longer is it an elementary school and it's turned over to the town or what's. We have an opportunity, and by the way, I'm not using this as an excuse, it just happens to be a pretty good bit of timing. We have quite a bit of work to do in this building. We have a pretty aggressive and a group of folks who are definitely want to fix this building and I sit on those meetings. We have some things to do here, some pretty serious things, some safety related things. Okay? It gives a great opportunity for us to do that. I'm not going to lie to people, I'm not using that as, that's why we're doing it. It just happens to be a good timing. So, in terms of the use, you know, I, I don't, I haven't honestly thought that far ahead, to be very, to be very candid.
I just want to say, the questions you're asking are what is, what we'll look at if the override doesn't pass. So let's be clear, this budget as presented fully funds this district to continue working as it is for this coming fiscal year. Okay? So let's be clear on that, that these numbers as derived, and what we're asking for, for our operating budget, which in this town is including this ninety-three thousand and change override, includes level, level services, like, to our kids here. Okay? That's what we are hoping will happen, to pass. And all of these discussions that we're worrying about will mean nothing. I just want to make sure we set the stage. There's, there's no plans to do anything as of yet. We want this budget to pass so we can continue on as we are operating.
Christine, can you take quite a few? Christine?
Hi. Last year during the reorganization discussion, I personally advocated to leave the fifth grade at the middle school, and there's a lot of reasons that it isn't going to be possible if it's whole town. So what if you keep it that way, if it's going to be possible? How about, we keep the preschool here to justify the building number. Let kindergarten go where they are and the town keep the rest of it going. I know we don't have a right to claim it because it's a district program, not a Phillipsden program. It would also be easier and safer for all the pickups and drop-offs of the students we're set up for that.
We looked at that. To hit this number, though, in order to have the pre-K down here, it's a great idea. We need a nurse. I need to bring back, well, again, all the staff. I'd have to bring back all the support staff back. All of a sudden, that number that I, I have to hit, all of a sudden, if, if the override doesn't pass, because that's what folks are talking about, if the override doesn't pass, then, then that number, I have to hit that number. So, yeah, that's a great idea. That's what we talked about last year, for, for keeping the pre, the kindergarten down here as well. That's the, that was the plan the last we spoke until the, the group was disbanded.
There was somebody over here? Yes, ma'am, it was.
So when you said that, this school, you can have kindergarten through this?
Yeah.
That happens every year.
Yeah.
I can't, I got my husband, I raise my kids.
Why they take this for a while?
And what's going to happen when, because I have kids who struggle with diabetes, they have bigger classes, how is he going to get focused on his health with these classes?
So, absolutely. I'm literally talking, not from the, you know, the soul perspective, I'm talking about the financial perspective. Probably about three years ago, as I looked at, probably this conversation decided, should have decided to take place, to be very candid. But then I want to hear that now, because it's too late, right? But, to your point, I know that someone sent me a lot of information about what small classes do, because it's, it's, it's steeped in the research that small classes equal to good education. Yes, of course. But here's the, here's the thing. What really supports good learning, what's the number one thing that affects learning are teachers. Not just any, good teachers. That's right, we do. So if you're going to tell me that I got to do it year up there for twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-eight, I don't like it at all. But I like, I like who I have doing it, because we do have excellent teachers. I'm not placating, and I know that. It's just true. And so, I don't have an answer about that part, but I, it's, it is a financial issue that we are going to be re, recurring year after year, just because of the, how upside down it is in terms of the student population.
They're going to be in eighth in every class? How would that work?
So, it, not in every single class, we're in an eighth in every single class in the classrooms that we have now.
Bonnie?
Move the question.
Just a second. Okay. We're, we're moving the question. Motion to move the question?
It's not about the kids.
It's, we've got a motion to move the question. So, we've got to move.
I just want to understand the question. We're just voting on...
On the override, particularly?
To go up to override.
Yes. Moving override, we have a valid question. Two parts, it's a two-part question. But the first question is, move the question. Those in favor of moving the question, say aye. Who say nay? Question is moved. So we're on the vote. Article twelve, which is to raise and appropriate ninety-three thousand, fifty-three dollars, subject to a pro, two and a half override. That question will appear as, this is a two-step process. We have, it would have to be approved tonight and then approved again at a ballot measure on May twentieth. May twentieth? May twentieth. So this is the first step tonight. Those in favor, those approving ninety-three thousand, fifty-three dollars, pro, two and a half override question, or there against the regional school district, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Okay. Those in favor of the override question, ninety-three thousand, oh fifty-three, please stand and remain standing. Motion carries, sixty in the affirmative, twelve in the negative.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Ralph Moderator, I'd like to motion Article thirteen as written, raising and appropriating one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars, deleting or accumulating that to...
Second. It moves the second to raise one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars for the Monty Tech Vocational Technical for FY twenty. Is there any discussion? Reg?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, why don't we take the position that the city of Gardner is taking in opposing it? Because the school, the state split is not equal to what we receive as a regional school Monty Tech receives more funding from the state than Naryance and regional. Are you making, I'd like to know if someone can explain it in further detail.
Good evening, everybody. Eric Olson, Ballin Road, Phillipsden, Mass. I am the Monty Tech Vocational Technical School Committee Representative for Town Phillipsden. And if we need chance, we have our, our business manager, Tanyan Croft, here this evening as well, they could answer some questions if we need to. So I specifically have a question about, you know, why does vocational technical schools have a higher minimum required contribution by the state? Right? It's kind of an easy calculus. It costs more to run vocational technical school than it does the Naryance School. Right? Our fees are higher to run our vocational programs, and running the shops and trades has an increased cost.
But look at what we're going through right now, this county district, you know? Your school receives the funding it needs and it runs nicely and all the towns contribute to it, just both desire to do it every single time. There's no resistance, and here we are going for an override. We're struggling.
I would argue that being on the school committee now for seventeen years, we've had many years where we struggled. In many meetings, many nights, where we have formulated plans of how to keep our costs down, how to curb our healthcare, other expenses, find other sources of revenue to offset our increases. The Monty Tech School District is not even one percent over the state's required minimum entry contribution. One percent. We run our budget very, very tight to the minimum required for the state. We can't know much of what the state values are. And I would sit here and agree, and most on the Monty Tech committee, if not all, would also agree that the state proportion of funding is not fair. How funding is worked, some of the other funding, to the layers, the mayor of Gardner, who I spoke with many times about this, we're in support of getting things adjusted and finding ways to find other funding to support that. But I wouldn't do it against something that's working, that the programs we're working at today, right? It doesn't seem a true decision to make as a, as a town to not support something that's been working very well for our students and a school committee in school that is actually doing a good job of being fiscally responsible. Anyone else have any questions for the audience? Have done all those in favor of the, I'm sorry, Tom?
I, I just wanted to remind Mr. Olson that he should have pointed out to the folks here in town that Monty Tech paid for veterinary program, Walk, Stock and Merrill. The kids built it. The electricians in the building built it. It cost us nothing. If you were to look at last year's Monty Tech budget, it was greater. This year, it is less. Yeah, there's some mechanics going on there that, less kids. But still, we have the tradition of the budget pretty much staying the same. It's not like it goes up and down and up and down. So you have to remember that they do an awful, awful lot down there that they could turn around, like other vocational schools, and charge the towns for the kind, you know, let's build an ambition for veterinary services. I didn't have the opportunity, I was busy, I had something else that was, took the time. But I went to go and experienced the open house down there. They have a professor, correct me if I'm wrong, who's been overseeing the program. The program is such a status that Mount Wachusett has been working with them to set up a night program there. I personally, this isn't me, Tom Spex speaking, I cannot, to the life of me, look at their figure and say that they're doing anything wrong down there. Eric?
This is Timmy.
Uh, resident speaking this time, Baldwin Road. Uh, I think we should leave the Monty Tech number where it is. Uh, some kids are made to go to be an electrician and mechanic, uh, and some kids get a, a jump start on dentor plumbing, and they give things out in Portland, uh, local, Naryance County District can't give them. Uh, I think it would be crazy to look at this number and change it, uh, for some of the, uh, gifted students that are made to be electricians and plumbers and stuff. Uh, you should just leave this alone.
Tim? Say a second?
Second.
The move and seconded to move the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, move the question. All those in favor of raising and appropriating one hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars to pay our share of the Monty Tech school budget for FY twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I would motion Article fourteen as written, but changing the compensation to fourteen dollars and seventy-four dollars per hour. Seventy-four cents, my bad. Fourteen dollars, seventy-four cents.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. To set the compensation for cemetery commissioners at fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents per hour. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to note that, um, unfortunately, the, uh, adjustment that was made last year during wage and comp to set this was not reflected on this current board, so the current rate of pay is fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents. We're not asking for an increase to that, we want the funding to what FY nineteen.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the article as adjusted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Article ten. Article fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article fifteen as written, amending the compensation to fourteen dollars and seventy-four cents per hour, deleting or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
Article fifteen's been moved and seconded at the rate of fourteen seventy-four an hour. Is there any discussion? And then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously to Article sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I would motion Article sixteen as written, raising and appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars to be in or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
Article sixteen has been moved and seconded and as printed, is there any discussion? To none, all those in favor of Article sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Article sixteen passes unanimously. Article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article seventeen as written, raising and appropriating forty thousand dollars, deleting or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
Article seventeen has been moved and seconded, as printed in the warrant, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article eighteen, amending it to include the payments for W B Mason for one hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents, and also a Westman bill for one hundred and three dollars and thirty-one cents, raising and appropriating two hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, and deleting, uh, deleting the firemed of two thousand seven hundred and ninety bills that we must pay, and deleting or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded to, to leave the firemed bill, and to raise and appropriate one fifty-three ninety-three for W B Mason and one oh three thirty-one for West. One oh three thirty-one for West. W B X.
So, just to note why this is happening, um, there were some outstanding bills, the W Mason bill, seventy-eight bills, which some, some supplies did not get, um, accounted for in FY nineteen, um, or it just, it just didn't. So, we need to pay that this year. The firemed bill, initially thought was unpaid, but it was paid, so it has come off this. And the Westman bill, it was a bill that was under dispute, um, at the fire department. They were trying to figure, they thought it was paid, so they were disputing this. And it was recently resolved that, yes, we did fact, oh, one hundred and three dollars and thirty-one cents. So, that's what that amount is for.
These are past due bills, which means they're from prior this fiscal year, so we need a four-fifths vote to approve this. Any other questions about these two bills? Yes, ma'am?
What, what happened to that firemed, twenty-seven ninety?
It turns out that that bill had been paid. So, we're good. The big one got paid, the two little ones are still outstanding. Okay. We're gonna have to do a count on this, because that's four fifths, don't we? Unless it's unanimous, that's correct. So, all those in favor of the article as amended, adjusted, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article nineteen as written, deleting or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
Article nineteen has been moved, as printed in the warrant, is there any discussion?
So, what this article is allowing the town to do is that the end of the year, so to the next fiscal year in 2020, the tax collector position becomes an appointed collector rather than an elected collector. Um... And if that's the purpose of the election, so this also has to be at the election.
So, just a little extra background, Sally, our current tax collector is retiring next year. We have talked a number of years about consolidating the treasurer and the collector position, which is normally the way that those positions are set up. We have held off on doing that while Sally held one of those positions, because nobody wanted to take a position from her. And she's notified us that she plans on filling this current year in FY twenty, and that she will not be running for reelection. So, this is a two-step process again. We have to take a vote at this town meeting, and then the law says you're supposed to wait sixty days till the election. So, that's why we're voting now. And then, at a general election, which will be the next annual town election, we will have a ballot issue to approve consolidating the two positions. If we waited and tried to do it next year, we wouldn't have enough time between the annual town meeting and two weeks later, the ballot election, we wouldn't have the sixty days. So, that's what's going on. Yes, ma'am?
Um, if you consolidate the position, are you requiring that it be a certified collector treasurer?
Yes, I, I, yes.
I would think it would be preferable.
Okay, David?
Appointed by whom? Could it be the selectmen?
The board of selectmen. Any other questions?
I'd, I'd like to see it so that the tax, uh, um, uh, the taxpayers will be able to vote.
Right, they will be able to vote, yes.
They'll be able to vote.
Right, they're voting tonight, and they get to vote in, in, um, it's name.
No, that's not it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Stephanie?
Was this a recommendation from the Department of Revenue?
It's been twice recommended by the Department of Revenue, and it's been recommended multiple times by our audience. Any other questions? Karen?
Um, just if we don't make it appointed and it's elected, which is a nice thing sometimes, you've gotta remember, it has to be somebody that lives in your town. And you may not have somebody that's a certified tax collector treasurer that has a qualification living in your town to run for that office. So, that's one reason why towns are slowly changing these kind of positions to appointed positions, so you can get the best qualified candidate that would like the job for your town.
Anything else? David?
Is there any cost savings by combining the positions?
Yeah, I think there is a, yeah, it doesn't take as much.
Well, a background, uh, ground check be done by the selectmen before they, uh-
We do background check on all our hires. Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Majority has. Article twenty.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion Article twenty as written, deleting or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
Article twenty has been moved and seconded as printed in the warrant, is there any discussion?
Um, I'd like to just explain what this is. Um, this would set, um, a two-thousand-dollar limit, um, or exemption, I should say, for personal property tax. Currently, we accept personal property tax on, um, contents of your home and some other things. Um, according to what the information was given to the finance committee, the amount of what is collected on anybody who has less than two-thousand dollars is minimal, and the time they spend trying to collect the money from the tax bills that send out far outweighs whatever we're collecting. So, this would just put a minimum threshold on, um, the tax bills that go out and eliminate a lot of the hard work that has to go in as collecting money, so? Don't, don't run from it.
David?
I'd just like to add to that, it's your second home, not your primary home. See, I believe you only said your home.
Did, I did.
It's the second home that you own.
Second home, I'm primary, thank you.
Any other questions? Tom? Go, your hand up there.
Um, is that? Personal property, can you define that? Is that a piece of land, or is that something that you own in your house?
It's, it's things in your house, I need you to find personal property, which is David.
David?
Um, it's, it's, so long, in the house and around the lake, it could, it could be a lot of the cottages that are valued less than sixty-six thousand dollars. Because the land is, around the lake is most expensive, so we're not, it's not affecting land. If your cottage is generally less than the sixty-six thousand, it's, it's very small, it's only three percent of that. So, it's not worth it, like you were saying, going out to try and collect twenty, thirty bucks from people.
And it's only the things under two-thousand dollars that we're-
Correct.
-talking about. Look at the land.
And it's not just your second contents on your, like, weight homes or like that, it's also your small businesses in town that get assessed the personal property tax too. So, I mean, Phillipsville doesn't have a lot, but that's also personal, you know, property for the people.
Any other questions or comments? Bring up all those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Capital Projects, Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to recommend, I would like to motion Article twenty-one as written, amending item number two to say to repair and paint the town hall, and will transfer from free cash one hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred dollars, deleting or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
Article twenty-one has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Jeffrey? I would like to know if they couldn't consider siding in the back of the town hall where nobody can see it to help with, uh, painting in the future and keep it a little warmer.
What was the selectman like to say about siding the back of the town hall where nobody can see it?
Can you think about vinyl siding?
You can't side, it's a historical, it's, it's, it's historical, uh, restricted, you couldn't side it. Is that historical?
That's another one, I don't think.
You can't put side it.
David?
David Bradhall, Phillipsville, Williams, Hill Road. Um, I'm concerned about the appearance of the building, it looks like crap, really. And it has for about five years. And I hope to heck that you guys get a painter and do a good job. And also the front stairs, that's the first thing you see when you enter the town hall. And they got that stupid cone there for a year. Why? Why can't you just wore a new seven stairs?
So, good you, David.
It's the showmanship of the town, it's a battle.
Any other questions on that? David?
Is there any way that we could tap the CPA fund for this? It is part of the community and supposed to be deserved. Couldn't we try to get some of that money from the community?
Um, there is a later article, David, that puts some CPA funding into it.
Behold.
Yeah, but that's all that's available. We've been using CPA funds for a lot of this historic stuff, from the town hall annex to doing the roof and other things too. So, that's what's available right now. Any other questions on the article? All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-two, Community Preservation Articles.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion this article as written, deleting or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
Article twenty-two has been moved and seconded. Let me see if. There's one, there's. There's one.
Mr. Moderator, the Community Preservation Committee passed this, March seventh, twenty-nine year.
The, um, Community Preservation Committee is looking apparently for money to match a grant from the state to have some, uh, architects and engineers look at the building and determine what else needs to be done and get some price quotes and design drawings and so on made, so that's what this money is for. Any other questions or comments about this? I think we'll be ready for the next grant. All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimously, that, that. Article twenty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion this as written, amending to say to match thirty-six thousand in free cash towards the repairs and painting of the historic town hall and hall incidental amenities cost, deleting or acting in relation thereto.
Second.
Article twenty-three has been moved and seconded and as adjusted to the correct figure. Is there any discussion about this article? John?
Mr. Moderator, we, uh, CTC passed this at, uh, May second, twenty-nine year.
There was questions earlier about using CTC money for the town hall, this is one place where CPA money is being used, and again, is trying to batch the town money to make it a little bit further. Is there any discussion about the question, article? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-four. Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article twenty-four as written, adding in the amounts, um, for historic resource, resources reserved as nine thousand, for community housing reserve as nine thousand dollars, for open space reserve nine thousand dollars, and for budgeted reserve sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And then, is there any other questions?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Article twenty-four, with nine thousand dollars allocated for the historic resources reserve, nine thousand dollars allocated for the community housing reserve, nine thousand dollars allocated for the open space reserve. housing reserve, nine thousand dollars allocated for the open space reserve, sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars allocated for the budgeted reserve, and the five hundred dollars for the expenses, FY twenty. Is there any discussion on this? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Capital investment articles. Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article twenty-five as written, transferring from free cash one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, deleting or acting relation matter.
Second.
Article twenty-five has been moved and seconded and printed in the warrant. Is there any discussion? David.
How much money do we have in the, uh, capital investment fund?
Question is, what's the balance in the capital investment fund?
Forty-seven, six thirteen, forty-nine.
Forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, sorry, red.
If this fund was added to the used amount, would that help us fund the override?
No, this is free cash money being put into it, so it's not available for funding operating expenses.
Why is that?
Because you don't fund the operating expenses using one-time revenue expenses like free cash. It's an accounting principle.
Would we be able to allocate it into a different budget that then would be able to pay for the override?
No. It's the same problem. There's no place you can put free cash that you can then put it into operating expenses. It's like taking money out of your savings account to take it for costs. Once you do that, the money's gone, you wouldn't have any money then to do it for. It's a one-time, entry point. All those in favor of the article as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Where she carries. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article twenty-six as written, transferring from the capital investment fund forty-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars, deleting or acting relation matter.
Second.
Article twenty-six has been moved and seconded to appropriate forty-six thousand, eight oh five from the capital investment fund to pay for this year's payment of the fire department's fresh truck. And this requires a two-thirds vote to approve. Is there any discussion on this warrant article? Dave, and then I'm going over here in a second. David.
Um, the description of this truck, it says plow truck. I don't know how many people are aware of this, but last year I kind of was, I was against this thing and didn't recommend it for plowing. But it's my understanding that they had it outfitted with a plow, but they do not want to plow with it. I don't know if anybody can confirm that, but I believe we threw some money away on that. And if anybody is under the impression that they were going to help the highway out by plowing their own parking lot, fire hose, that's not going to happen with this vehicle. Um, still the description is kind of conceiving, I believe, if anybody can correct me on that.
Chief Dukey can talk about the plowing. This is the description that was approved last year when it was purchased. We're not, we're just taking a payment, we're not pulling out of the chair. Is not a member of the town meeting, but if there's no objection, I can ask him to speak to any questions about the truck.
Okay.
So then, what, what is your question?
Is the truck going to be used to plow or not?
It is not.
And why is that?
Because it's a private truck.
So last year, when I told the former chief that he shouldn't be doing that with it, he said it was perfectly fine.
I thought I'd speak to whatever was at last year.
Right, but I was just trying to bring up people's sentiment that if that helped you vote this truck in, it was kind of a...
Yeah, I was not part of that process.
So it's not going to be used, um, it is not going to be used as a plow.
Good answer. Agreed.
Mr. Lee was ahead of you then.
I just, I see now that it says this is the second payment, and next year we'll have the final payment.
That's correct. Yep.
Jeffrey. I understand this truck is a little on the wide side, too big to really go into the woods. And if that's true, and it's got a plow, could we consider trans, uh, furring that from the biting patterns to the highwaying patterns so they get used to the highway?
I'd say our highways are pretending. It's a bad idea. Just for the record, uh, this was just definition for payment for this truck. It is not going to be a plow truck. Uh, it's not feasible for that. Uh, the fire department, um, realized that as soon as the actor she preceded it. Uh, no, I cannot use that truck, I need bigger spots to turn it around. Um, and the fire department, we're keeping the plow, and that is going to be put in storage, and the next time the highway has to get a new pickup truck, we'll have a plow so we can get them without a plow and get another truck. But that could be down the road.
If it's got a ten-foot plow, maybe eight-foot plow.
Nine-foot plow. We use, uh, we've got two eights and we've got one nine.
We're not talking about the steel plows yet.
Tom, do you have anything else to add, David?
No.
Perfect, thank you. All right. This is, this requires a two-thirds vote to approve. All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article as written, amending to state transfer from the capital investment fund forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, deleting or acting relation matter.
Second.
Article twenty-seven has been moved and seconded, with the amount corrected to forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the article, we need a two-thirds vote on this. All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Article twenty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion the article as written, replacing the sum of money with transfer from free cash, one hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, deleting or acting relation matter.
Second.
Um, because I know someone asked, that would march thirty-first, the stabilization fund balance was four hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars, seventy-one cents.
Questions? Dave, your hand's up. Go ahead.
So I think I touched on this subject before. None of this money can be used to reduce that profit, uh, about two and a half, ninety-three thousand, um, and this hundred and one thousand would be a part of it at all.
That's correct. That money, a hundred and one thousand dollars is free cash money, so no, it would not be used to reduce all the costs.
So, can we take, can we take any from the table of the article?
It's the same thing. It's one-time revenue, it's not used, uh, it's really different. Bruce.
I might be wrong, but I believe it's not best practices to take funds from free cash to fund recurring expenses. But I don't think that that is a hard and fast rule. I believe the town meeting can vote to spend free cash for whatever they want to, and it's just not best practices. So that's my opinion, so unless townsfolk can tell me something different, I believe that.
I'm just saying it's not best practice, but it's not against town meeting.
Dave.
Put down council votes. Mr. Moderator, that is correct. Uh, town meeting has the authorization to expend free cash or stabilization funds for any lawful purpose. And what, um, the, uh, member of the finance committee said is correct, that it is more of an accounting kind of best practice not to use one-time revenues for recurring expenses. But there's nothing illegal about spending free cash for, you know, operating expenses in town, so it's, it chooses to do something. Thank you.
All those in favor of the article as printed, say aye. Say aye.
I'd like...
No, David, we're voting now. All those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carries. Zoning articles. Article twenty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to motion Article as written, deleting or acting relation matter.
Second.
We have a report from the planning board. Friend?
Uh, you want to speak on it?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay, so, so the, uh, the planning board was working on this with the advice of town council after, uh, bylaw revisions of last year, which they voted at the town meeting. And so there was no misunderstanding, clarification of differences of cannabis. Uh, this mirrors, uh, medical marijuana bylaw. Um, we had to have one for recreational also, so there wasn't a confusion that they were kind of like homing together. So on the advice of town council, we, we did this, we had a public hearing, and we recommended, the, uh, the vote was passed this, so that there's not any, um, misunderstanding between the two uses. It, it mirrors exactly what we already have for mer, uh, for medical marijuana.
The planning board recommended this article.
Does, does that...
Does. Does recommend it.
The town of Holy Falls, town hall. Ahem, I'd like to draw your attention to section three of this zoning article, part three, where it says location. I'd like to point out to the voters, before vote takes place, that the state law, when we voted for, for, sorry, retail, recreational marijuana, the state law, um, puts a five-hundred-foot zoning, um, in place. Um, the town of Phillipson has come under that at three hundred. Um, I would also like to point out that cannabis control commission also recommends a five-hundred-foot zone, even though the town of Phillipson has still put in three hundred feet. Um, with that being said, um, I'd also like to say that it is very important in our town and in other towns, who actually I would like to point out first, that other towns, including Applewood Park, have a five-hundred-foot zone in place. Um, and with that being said, it is very important to me, and I'm sure to others, that we do our best as the city of, city of Phillipson, and I think people have pointed this out prior tonight, that we care about youth in this town, um, that we do everything we can to keep it as far away from youth as possible. So if you think of what a three-hundred-foot radius around this school would be, it would not be very far. So I would like to make a motion that three hundred feet gets changed to five hundred feet.
Second.
In section B. Thank you. Um, it's in, it's under location.
Page thirty-five.
Page thirty-five, section three, part B.
Okay.
No marijuana establishments shall be located on a parcel which is three hundred feet, and make the motion change that to five hundred feet.
So three feet.
Sorry about that.
Three, second, three.
Section three B.
Okay, thank you.
Page, sorry, page, um, it's page fourteen. Page fourteen. Section three, under location, part B. I'd like that to read that no marijuana establishment shall be located on a parcel which is within five hundred feet to be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of each property line of a parcel occupied by a public or private elementary, junior high, middle, vocational, or high school, college, junior college, university, or childcare facility, or any other use in which children commonly come and meet in an organized, ongoing formation.
So any other comment, discussion on that motion? Just a second, I'm going to go over to the second person.
I do, I do have a question. Um, did you also, were you also looking to expand the three hundred feet under section B? Or any property line? Yes, I think that works as well.
No. No.
Can I, can I revisit my second, can I revisit my second amendment?
No. No, one motion at a time, one amendment at a time. We'll get that, we'll come back to that third one.
I think we're going now, we're starting to confuse this, and we're going to end up trying to change something and get ourselves in a pickle. Right now, the, uh, the existing bylaw, the medical marijuana, and there's some discussion about the people grandfathered in about under that provision, is three hundred feet. We can't change that tonight, that three hundred feet. The only one that we can change is the new one that mirrors the medical marijuana for the recreational. I would leave it the way it is, and if the people have an issue with that, we'll address it in the course of the year, and next year we'll change them both at the same time. Otherwise, you're going to have two different numbers under the, um, under the marijuana bylaws. I think it's going to be confusing, and I, I think people are going to, um, uh, I think someone's going to come back after the town and say it wasn't, it wasn't clear because the numbers are different.
When Damon Schmidt came to speak to town last week, he, um, he told us that, uh, that they could move into town and, and set up a, uh, as many stores as they want because we have no regulations in place. Let's change this to five hundred feet now. I'm sure people can differentiate between commercial and medical marijuana in their applications. If we, if we don't do it now, then, um, applications can come in and we're stuck with the three So what came up at the, uh, meeting, the, the, the public hearing for bylaw, um, we were talking about changing the five hundred to three hundred, which I don't disagree with. But we need this bylaw to pass so you do have regulations in place. And maybe town council can answer, what would the attorney general do if you have three hundred feet on one, tied with bylaw, and five hundred feet on the other? Will that be an issue and have this whole thing get crossed out?
When, Greg Turner, what was the bylaw, what was the part, the, um, they had the three hundred feet?
Medical, medical.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As I read the warrant article, it says, to see if the town will vote to amend its zoning bylaws as most recently amended by replacing the existing section twenty-one with the following. So if this bylaw is approved by town meeting, and then ultimately approved by the attorney general, which I would expect it would be, it would replace what currently is there. So I don't see in the current, in the article that's, in the zoning bylaw that's included in the warrant, two different measurements for, uh, recreational versus medical marijuana. It says specifically that, uh, the second question that was, is being proposed to be amended refers to it as a marijuana establishment, and in the definitions, it defines marijuana establishment as...
And in the definitions, it defines marijuana establishment as medical and recreational. So in, in my opinion, it does not appear that there will be two different measurements.
Okay, we're going to take a look on the amended, changing the distance from three hundred to five hundred feet in part three B. All those in favor of amending the measurement from three hundred to five hundred feet, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, it's amended to five hundred feet. Now, if you wanted to make an adjustment on the other five hundred, whatever, you could do that. Okay. Any other discussion on the bylaw itself? Dave?
Did we just change one of them or did we change both of them?
We just changed the one, three B from five, three hundred to five hundred feet. Reg?
I would make one amendment to the motion on that article. In under location, three, with the three location, paragraph C, is to change the three hundred to five hundred.
Okay. So now you're looking at the next paragraph down there, three C, and you want to change that from three hundred to five hundred. So you leave it seconded. Any further discussion on that? There's a lady in the back, Jeff, and I'll get to you. This man.
To, uh, town council, does the cannabis commission review the licensing on an annual basis for these facilities? Being, and, and not the cultivation, but the dispensary, similar to a license for liquor? Do we know that? And can we add that?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. In response to the question, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know that there is a regular review process with the cannabis control commission. Um, this is a zoning bylaw.
Right.
We have no ability to regulate what the state does. So the cannabis control commission has regulations in place with respect to any marijuana establishments. They regulate them in terms of their actual licensing. All the town is doing this evening is determining where in town these types of businesses can be located and otherwise...
I appreciate that, thank you.
And otherwise, all is certainly certain.
You can't put a licensing, um, that, you're saying, you cannot add that to our zoning that we...
No, this is only, the state controls the actual licensing of marijuana.
Jeff, any questions?
Um, what I want to know is, the place that's supposedly going to go over here, one, two A, is they, have they, are they going to be at three hundred or are they going to be at five hundred? Are they trying to change them or are they staying the same?
No, they don't have a license, they don't have a...
They don't have an application, so I, I don't know for three or five minutes.
He said in front of you last week that he was some kind of grandfather, some people say.
People can say what they want. I, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay.
I didn't hear you.
No, we don't have an application.
I think the lady behind you here had a question.
So, so there's a most common law for three C to be changed? There's a three A that's also less than five hundred. Do we change them all at the same time?
Yes.
No, that's the other thing.
It's something different.
You don't want to...
Something different. Let's stick with the one we're working on right now, okay?
This is...
Uh, we start with all these measurements that everybody's thrown out. I mean, everybody in this audience has been trying to find a way all night to get rid of this profit two and a half, to use money from this one, to that one, and this one. You've got revenues that have committed to this town, the outskirts of town, on two A. And the same people, in some cases, are asking on how to transfer money from other funds. Let's make sure that these feet are correct, uh, for our planning board and make sure that everybody's not getting their wise profit five hundred, three hundred, four hundred. It just seems like it's getting way out of control here. We've got a chance to bring something to town, let's legal it. Then I think we should really attempt on how strictly make it difficult for that one town. And I'm not a part of that.
Uh, with all due respect to that, I think, uh, this, this to me is about protecting children.
And while we're deciding our vote.
Speak for yourself. Anything else? All right, the motion is to change from paragraph three, C, the measurement from three hundred feet to five hundred feet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Majority passes. Now we're back to the main motion. Any other amendments to the article, the zoning bylaw? Requires a two-thirds vote to adopt. So all those in favor of the zoning bylaw, article twenty-nine, as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Article thirty.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to motion article thirty as written, deleting or acting relation act.
Second.
Article thirty's been moved and seconded to the warrant. Is there any discussion on this article? All right, all those in favor of article thirty, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Chair will accept the motion.
Mr. Moderator?
Sorry?
Mr. Moderator?
Motion passes. This man.
I'd like to make a motion to revisit article twelve.
I'm sorry, I was just accepting a motion to, to close meeting.
That's what you said, and I instructed you before you said...
Yes, I didn't finish speaking. You interrupted me before I called, so I finished. What is my statement? I'm going to accept a motion to adjourn the meeting. See to DA. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Motion to adjourn, this is her second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, then we will continue.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to revisit article twelve.
My second amendment. Motion to revisit article twelve means that there has to be a basis for revisiting article twelve on the basis of new information.
What is the new information that we didn't have when we did article twelve?
When we did article twelve, um, we didn't have the information of being able to use other funds such as free cash and stabilization because they were told they could not, and that's what...
Mr. Moderator? So is this a motion to revisit article twelve? It also looks like it's a new information. We need to... Yeah. I do see the bylaw for that. What do I do? So... I'm old.
Motion to reconsider requires a two-thirds vote. Motion to reconsider requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of reconsidering article twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have to count. All those in favor of reconsidering article twelve, please stand and debate.
No, but... All those opposed, they do. Yes. That's why they're going to... Yes.
All those in favor, sit down. All those opposed, with a motion, please stand. Motion fails. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting, see to DA? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting is closed. Thank you very much.